We are ready to begin. I will call to order the regular meeting in the common council of the city of Platteville for Tuesday, November 24, 2015, and we will start with roll call.
Mike Den?
Here.
Barbara Doss?
Here.
Barb Stackhausen?
Here.
Tom Knoll?
Here, with my M&amp;Ms.
And Killian?
Here.
Eileen Nichols?
Here.
Amy Seboth Wilson?
Here.
And here.
First item on our agenda is a public hearing regarding the 2016 budget. I believe that we are going to have a presentation by city manager.
Team presentation. And I'll just wait for us to get the PowerPoint up. So exciting to see everyone here for the budget.
Which will be on the back screen.
Yes, it will be on the back screen.
We hate to have you do this, but if you want to see and listen, then the budget presentation itself is on the screen in the back. Fortunately, that's the best we can do in this facility as far as putting up a screen.
All right, well with that, I'll go ahead and get started. The city budget is the work of a lot of talented people, and I want to acknowledge my presentation partner Valerie Martin, because she has put a tremendous number of hours into this, as well as Duane and the rest of the finance staff and the department heads. So even though I'm going to stand up here for a few minutes, they are really the people behind the scenes doing the work. And so I just wanted to quickly review -- oops, I forgot my clicker. I just wanted to quickly review the budget timeline. We're here tonight for the public hearing, but there's been a lot of meetings we've had before we've gotten to this point. Started with a common council review and establishment of our 2016 budget themes and goals, which I'll talk about in a minute. Then we had a few workshops on CIPs and the proposed city manager budget during months of September, and then three meetings during October. We did have an open forum for the public where we were going to go through the same presentation. We didn't have any takers, but obviously everyone was saving up for tonight. And then tonight, we have the actual public hearing. And so just a little bit about the themes that the council established for the upcoming year. We started with what our guiding principles would be, sort of the overarching values that we'd want to include in all of our work. And the first one of those guiding principles has to do with growing prosperity in the community. And by prosperity, we really mean good-paying jobs, because we feel that's fundamental to the success of our residency and our community. The second guiding principle had to do with fostering good relationships with our public and private partners. The third item was incentivizing private efforts that could support long-range city goals, because we know, and given the budget constraints that we have, that the city is not able to take the lead on everything. The next one was promoting unique development, places, events, and activities within Platteville. And then lastly, using the talents of our staff through participative decision-making. So in terms of the actual themes and goals for the upcoming year, the first theme was Revitalize, and we had a few different goals associated with the Revitalize theme, starting with the library block project, which is, I think, why most of you are here tonight, identifying a developer for the Pioneer Ford property, which is also on our agenda this evening, developing a program to support the conversion of single-family homes from renter to owner occupied, and then exploring a future referendum for City Hall and our fire station building needs. The next theme had to do with educating and enforcing, and our goals in this area has to deal a lot with code enforcement. And so we wanted to look at developing an education campaign related to code enforcement issues, identify community resources to assist our low or fixed-income residents with code compliance, reinstitute ongoing proactive code enforcement, and then reviewing our residential permit program to see if it's working the way that it needs to. The next theme was Inspire, and a lot of this has to do with how we communicate as an organization with the residents. And we're looking there at curating a branding strategy and key messages, developing a new website, and developing a new city newsletter. And then our -- oops, our last -- oh, that's a little sensitive. Our last theme was Support, and this is really things that we needed to work on internally as an organization, because we have to work well internally to be able to do a great job externally with our customers. And we had three goals there, which had to do with continuing our IT upgrades, creating a formal compensation plan for staff, and instituting consistent new hire process. So I would just say with respect to the budget that Valerie's going to talk about in more detail, it's always a balancing act. We have to maintain our streets, buildings, and equipment, and that's important for us to be successful. And we have a lot of ongoing capital needs in that area. But new initiatives are also important, because as a city, we compete with other cities for businesses and residents. And so our challenge is to balance these things, because we want to be able to fund new initiatives, but we don't want to do it at the expense of maintaining our current infrastructure. And given some of the restraints we have in terms of levy limits and the fiscal expenditure restraint program, you know, that's a balancing act every year. And so the budget that we came up with for 2016 strives to balance those things. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Valerie.
Thanks, Karen. I'm going to talk about some of our budget challenges in detail, and then we'll get into some of the specifics for the 2016 budget. So what makes attaining that perfect balance that Karen talked about so difficult? There's three things for us. The first one is levy limits, the second is expenditure restraint, and the third is state aid. So what is a levy? A levy is the amount of tax requested by a taxing jurisdiction. The city of Platteville is one of five taxing jurisdictions on the city of Platteville's residents' tax bills. The other ones are Platteville Schools, Southwest Tech, the state of Wisconsin, and Grant County. 100% of the city's tax levy is included in the city of Platteville's residents' tax bill. However, only a portion of the other taxing jurisdictions are. For an example, Platteville Schools have part of their levy in the surrounding townships. Just a little history of levy limits, so you have an idea of what we get to deal with. Levy limits were first implemented in 2005. The limits apply to the total operational levy, not the tax rate. And before 2011, there was allowed for an annual increase, which was the greater of net new construction, or 3%. Since 2011, municipalities were only allowed to increase their operational levy by the amount of net new construction only. So what is net new construction? It's the growth in the tax base due to new construction minus demolitions. If it's negative, a 0% increase is allowed. So if there's no new construction, we don't get to increase our levy. Now talking about expenditure restraint. Expenditure restraint, also known as ERP, provides unrestricted aid to qualifying municipalities that limit growth in spending in the general fund. This is not something all municipalities do or follow, but we do get an extra payment, so we do want to stay within the restraints. This payment is in addition to aid paid under the county and municipal aid program. And it was enacted in 1990 in response to criticism that the state shared revenue program for municipalities encouraged municipalities to increase spending at the time aid payments were partially dependent on spending. So the ERP payment was meant to break this connection by targeting aid to high tax-rate communities that restrained spending growth. And I just have -- I like math, so there's the formula if anyone wants to know. So this just kind of looks at the last five years, what we are allowed to increase our levy, and then our ERP restraints. So as you can see, in 2015, we had a lot of net new construction, and we closed out one of our TIF districts. So we were able to increase our levy by 5.352. However, in order to stay in compliance with ERP, we could only increase it by 3.6%. In 2016, it was a little less. We could only increase our levy by .80%, and the ERP by .84%. So in 2013, just closing the loopholes, the negative adjustment to our tax levy now applies to new fees added to the tax roll if they were previously funded by the tax levy. So we had already had a special charge on our tax levy for garbage. So we're not allowed after 2013 to add new ones that weren't already on the tax bill. And always, as you'll see in futures in some of the next slides, we do rely on state aid quite a bit, and the trend has been that is decreasing every year. So from 2015 to 2016, we saw a decrease in about $55,882. So now getting into the 2016 budget specifics. These are just a few of our operating budget changes. There is a proposed salary increase of 1% effective January 1st. Also, the equivalent of 1% effective July 1st has been set aside to start funding potential salary changes identified through the compensation study that the city manager is having done. There was also an increase in health insurance costs, which I'll talk about in a little bit. There was a slight increase in part-time hours at the museum and library, as well as a slight increase in cost for technology and education and marketing. We also added a new contingency fund of $15,000. So health insurance. The dean rates are up 7.9% for the city. Medical associate rates are up 5.96%. And we did get a new provider for our dental rates, which is roughly a savings of about $6,000 for the city. And it was also voted that the share of insurance cost for employees at the city of Platteville would stay the same. Here's our WRS retirement city contribution. As you can see, it's went down every year. In 2015, it was 6.8% for general employees and 9.63% for protected. And then it's dropped to 6.6% for general and 9.4% for protected. And protected would be our police and fire. So the city of Platteville employs 89 people, and this is only counting our full-time and permanent part-time. We're not counting any of the seasonals. The total proposed wages for 2016 for the employees is $5,575,782. So this equals 68% of our total general fund expense budget. And this is just a -- I put together a graph that just showed all of our revenues for our general fund. As you can see, we talked about the shared revenue. Intergovernmental revenues are 45% of our revenues. So as the state continues to decrease, the city has to come up with other ways of finding -- other ways of finding revenue for the city. Property taxes are only 29.92%. And then you can -- I'm not going to read all of them, but you can see the rest. Our public charges for services, only 5% of our revenues. On the flip side, here are the expenses. You can see here, the police is 32%. General government is 16%. And again, you can just look and see Public Works is 21%. And this is just the general fund. This is not talking about our capital projects or anything like that. Capital projects. So in order to be in the capital project fund, the capital projects cost more than $10,000 and are generally less routine in nature. The proposed budget allocates $3,75,678 to capital projects. Street reconstruction and fire truck are the only things being financed through debt, and that totals $1,684,000. Proposed budget honors the city's financial policy of limiting debt to 3.5% of the city's equalized valuation. With this proposed borrowing, our anticipated debt would be 79% of the city's debt cap and 55% of the state's debt cap. So the state has a certain limit, and the city took it upon themselves to have higher restraints, so we feel we're a little more safe than the state's debt cap. Here are a few of our major capital projects. So for the street reconstruction projects, Bonson Street will be done this year from Main to Furnace Street. Fortunately, this is close to the TID District 7, so that expense will be a TID expense, TID meaning Tax Increment District. Richard Street from Straw to Chestnut will be done. Short Street from Adams to Cedar, Cedar from Water to Fourth, and Furnace from Chestnut to West End. And then just some other projects that aren't streets. We're going to replace a fire engine, number nine, just small street overlay repairs, a two-and-a-half-ton dump truck, leaf vacuum, new 911 software, highway striping, a Parks tractor, Harrison Playground, and then, as Karen talked about before, the city website. So this chart graph shows the general fund, debt service fund, and the CIP fund expenses. So this is the one -- this is including all of the capital projects that we just talked about. So as you can see, 20 -- it's hard to see, 23% is the capital fund. So again, those are the projects that I just talked about. Debt service would obviously be paying our loan payments, and then Public Works, et cetera, and the police. You can see all of those numbers there. So I'm sure this is what everybody's wondering, what is the impact on your taxes? So just a little 101 about the mill rate. The mill rate is also called the tax rate. It affects your taxes. It's part of the formula used in Wisconsin to assess your real estate taxes. So each mill represents $1 of tax assessments per $1,000 of assessed property value. So the Platteville -- this year's Platteville mill rate, if everything is passed tonight, is .0076 -- about $7.68. Excuse me, 7.68. That means that a home with an assessed value of $100,000 would pay $768.64 a year in property taxes. So mill rates are determined by the individual levies from the state, county, and local governments, including the school districts and vocational technical colleges within the jurisdictions. They do not always stay the same. So I talked about the taxing jurisdictions before. These are -- we have everyone's levy. So as you can see, I have the 2014 tax levies shown, and then the 2015. And also the percentage of increase or decrease. The city of Platteville's tax levy increased .80%. Platteville Schools increased 2.65%. That was the highest of the five. So again, our proposed levy is $3,957,447, with an assessed tax rate of $7.69 per $1,000 of assessed valuation. Our equalized rate is $7.17 per $1,000 of equalized valuation. So it actually, the assessed tax rate did increase this year. The equalized rate went down. So what does this mean to you? Homeowners will owe roughly $8 more per year on a $100,000 assessed home for the city's portion of the levy. This doesn't include all the taxing jurisdictions, but for the city's portion, $8 more on a $100,000 home. This just shows how we distribute our property tax within the city. So 62% of the property tax goes to our general fund. This year, 32% is going to the debt service fund. Only 5% is going to the capital fund. In past years, more has went, but we have to cover our operating expenses and our loan payments first before we can move it to the capital fund. This is just showing the tax rates since 2006. Again, you can just see that the -- excuse me, this is -- it shows the equalized percent difference, and it's decreased 8.48%. And this is the property tax levied. Again, it shows all of the taxing jurisdictions, and it shows at the bottom the percent change from 2006 to 2015. The city -- the vote tech doesn't really count, because they had a change in legislature that they are not taxing as much, because they're getting more aid from the government. So it shows their levy went down 12%, and it was because of that big change last year, as you can see. But the city, their levy increase has only been 11.52%, which is pretty good. So with the hope that the 2016 budget will be approved tonight, the current plan is for residents to receive their tax bills by December 15. And just, this is kind of informational for paying your taxes. Tax bills may be paid in two installments. The first installment due by January 31, and the second installment due by July 31. If the first installment is not paid by January 31, taxpayers are not allowed to defer the second half of their taxes. They must pay the entire tax bill, along with any penalties and interest arrived from the late payment. If you're using the installment plan, the first half of your tax bill is payable to the city of Platteville, and the second half goes to the county. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Questions from anyone? Thank you, Valerie. Under our public hearing process, the next item would be any public statements in favor. I've not had anyone register. Public statements against. And again, we're talking about the budget. Okay, you had put down museum board. Is that --
Yeah, I want to speak to the budget.
Okay, then please come up, give your name and your address, and we do ask that you limit yourself to no more than five minutes.
My name is David Allen. I live at 1430 Country Club Court. I've been a Platteville resident for 40 years. Came here to go to school and went to school for most of those 40 years. What I'd like to do tonight is make a few comments about the museum board. I'm serving as the president of that board right now, and I think the comments that I'm making speak for all of us as board members. And what I want to say is thank you for the support that the city gives to our museum here in town. We are extremely excited about where we are right now and what our future looks like as a museum. We're very excited about our new museum director, who you hired to put in charge of leading that museum. We had a seven-hour strategic planning meeting this last weekend, and lots of exciting goals and aspirations for the future of that museum. So just a couple of things I'd like to mention. Keep an eye out for the new activities and the new programs that will be going on there. The Halloween season was wonderful. Lots of children and lots of families, younger faces were at the museum. We're very excited as a museum board to get younger people there, interested in history and interested in our community. We've recently made affiliation to the Wisconsin State Historical Society, which I personally, and I think our board feels, is just an outstanding connection for us to make, in a sense of connecting us to the state of Wisconsin and to their promotions and to their advertising. We're very excited about electronically updating our collection. We have a marvelous, marvelous collection, but we need an electronic database system to be able to connect that and to store that information electronically, so that it doesn't get lost in a paper shuffle. Maybe it could get lost in an electronic shuffle, but we hope not. We hope to have those safeguards there. We also felt this was the right time to look at membership in the museum. Our membership has been fairly steady, fairly consistent. We'd like to see it grow. We're trying to create a new structure in which people can make donations, where they can support the museum in some new ways, and to get new programming and new activities going. So we're just -- we have lots of new things that we're kicking off that we think will be real exciting. Finally, we're looking at some better ways to preserve our collection. Some of the things that we have really need to be protected in some ways where they won't deteriorate. And again, those are things that we're looking at over a period of time, but making sure that we don't lose paper documents and cloth items and things that are hard to keep in our humidity, in our environment of southwest Wisconsin. So again, our strategic planning effort was a joint effort between the city's museum board and the Jamison Museum Board, putting together those two entities and looking at ways that we can move to the future. Can't do it without you folks and the support of the city, because obviously, the budget that we saw tonight supports the museum and many of the functions that we have. So we think it's our responsibility, and the Jamisons work together with us, to go out and raise funds, to keep additional things happening, and being able to do things that we don't expect to come from the city taxpayers. But your base really allows us the ability to operate and to have a wonderful place for kids and for adults to be able to come and use the museum. So thank you for your support of that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Going on with the public hearing, any public statements against the budget, any public statements in general? Council discussion?
I think we've discussed this budget six times.
We have had, as the city manager noted, a number of meetings, and it is always is a balancing act to come up with enough revenue for the items that need to be purchased and/or done in the city of Platteville. Well, if there's no council discussion, I would entertain a --
I have just one thing for you, Eileen. I do say I will. One thing I was hoping for is an amount of money for the fireworks for the city of Platteville. Nothing huge, but something reasonable, and I see we weren't able to put that in. But I just want to make that point, that I would like to have seen that.
Thank you.
I make a motion we close the public hearing.
Second?
We have a motion and a second, and we'll vote.
Den?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Seboth Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And common council action?
I make a motion we adopt Resolution 1527 appropriating the necessary funds for the operation and administration of the city of Platteville for the year 2016.
Second?
We have a motion and a second, and we'll vote.
Den?
Yes.
Doss?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Seboth Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I make a second motion that we adopt the budget amendments of $510,000 as were proposed. That's -- there's some additional money from municipal payments that we hadn't known we would receive in a few -- a decrease in the dental costs, and some, I think mostly bookkeeping things after that, which is another $510,000. That makes our total budget $17,282,401.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
We'll vote.
Den?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Seboth Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And I would like to echo on behalf of the council, thank you to staff and department heads and everyone involved in bringing this budget forward. Next item is consideration of the consent calendar. The following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to the routine nature of previous discussion. Please indicate to the council president if you would prefer a separate discussion and action. A is council minutes from our November 10-15 regular meeting. B is payment of bills. C is appointments to boards and commissions. I have none this evening, but we do have openings yet on the Board of Appeals and also on the Commission on Aging. D is licenses, a Class B beer and a Class C wine, change of agent for the premises at 50 West Main, and also included in the packet are one-year and two-year operator licenses to sell or serve alcohol, and also taxi licenses. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. We'll vote.
Den?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Seboth Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I have many green sheets up here, but nothing that is listed under comments by citizens or observations or petitions, so we're going to continue on to the rest of the agenda here. The next item is reports in our packet. We have reports from the Plan Commission. Den?
Nothing to add.
Airport Commission, Doss?
Nothing to add.
Library Board? I have nothing to add. And Museum Board, Stackhausen?
David Allen took my thunder. I attended that strategic planning session last Friday evening and Saturday morning, and it was very exciting, and I think we accomplished so much to keep our museum going. A nine-page document was generated from those sessions. So I thank all of us that attended.
All right.
I have an edit.
Yes?
It caught my attention under the library board meeting. It says the title is "The Platteville Public Board of Trustees Meeting." The word "library" is missing, so it's a little edit, but it's kind of significant.
Good catch.
Thank you.
Anything else from anybody on the council? All right, then we'll go on to the action items, and the first item is the library block development agreement. And we are going to start with a presentation from our city manager.
Okay.
Again, if you want to watch while the presentation is given, it is in the back of the room.
All right, so from now on, for the main act, we once again have a presentation. I apologize for those of you who were here at our October meeting, because this is going to look very familiar, but we wanted to make sure everybody was brought up to speed. And again, it's going to be a team effort. Myself and Jesse Lee Jones from our library will be partnering. And this also was, what we're going to talk about tonight was a collaborative project. And we have with us Steve Roy, who was our attorney representing us with respect to the proposed developers' agreement, as well as Troy Hookstra from United Development Solutions, who is the potential developer for the Library Block. There we go. So just a little background. I always like to start with our visioning documents, because I think they're important in terms of kind of setting the stage for what's before us. And for this project, I think the key visioning document was the Downtown Revitalization Plan that was done in 2009. And in that plan, it mentioned, kind of had a vision statement that said downtown Platteville is a vibrant place, and the cultural heart and identity of the community, a diverse business mix is thriving and profiting. Arrival to the downtown district is distinctive and appealing, and parking is easy to find. Visitors discover reasons to linger and explore, and more people choose to live downtown. With respect to that community vision, it references gateways, and certainly the Library Block is a visible gateway to both the downtown and the University of Wisconsin Platteville area. I have a couple of slides here that talk about the history of this project. I'm not going to review all of the history touchpoints. I think it just suffices to say that the idea of both what would happen in the downtown area and the future of the library has been talked about for many years, and certainly predates me by many, many years. And you can see kind of some of the various touchpoints. When it comes to the development proposal, what we're talking about is a public-private partnership to redevelop the Library Block. That block is bordered by Main Street, Pine, and then Elm and Chestnut. It would include the demolition of six existing buildings and the construction of two larger buildings, 22,000 square foot commercial space, which would house the library, and a 72-room Holiday Inn Express. The current library building would be renovated and house the Southwest Cap Health Clinic. The project would also include 55 underground and 42 surface parking lot spaces. And then with this, I'm going to turn it over to Jesse to talk about some of the specifics with respect to the library.
I think the concept of a new library has been on the minds of a lot of community members for long before I arrived here. My understanding was that in 2009, a library committee was formed to truly explore this, and unfortunately, it never quite got off the ground. So what did come out of that, though, was an excellent planning document that we call the Building Program, that we've used. It's a description of words and numbers that explains the services and operational requirements for the Platteville Public Library. So we turned this document over to the architects at Plunkett and Racech, and they use this as their written guide to address specific needs, such as spatial relationships, collection sizes, shelving, and parking needs. They did an excellent job, listening to staff and the building committee and our library board recommendations about specific community interests and service needs. We really appreciate the input we've received from the community, and we took a lot of consideration from the suggestions that we received from citizens. We're confident that we have created an open and flexible structure that we'll be able to respond to the changing needs of the community. The first floor of the new library will be a hub of adult activity. We have a main circulation and information desks, adult print and media collections, technology, reading areas, and a large group study room that will be used for classes, small events, and will be open for public reservations. This image here shows that there are a variety of colors and textures used to create an inviting environment in the new library. The ceilings on the main level will be a combination of wood ceiling panels, as well as the more traditional drop ceiling tiles. We're excited to be able to offer a literally warm and welcoming environment with a cozy fireplace, reading nook area, as one of the many delightful features of the new building. The second floor will feature the children's collections, as well as dedicated children's programming room. In our existing library, our one-community room accommodates 27 people and is shared between children's storytimes, school visits, book clubs, computer classes, board meetings, and community organizations that reserve our space. We are excited to be able to offer the community a variety of reservable meeting spaces while still dedicating an entire room to children's literacy programming. The new community room will accommodate up to 100 people and will be attached to a kitchenette that is shared with the children's programming space. Again, on the second floor, you will see that we have a lot of playful colors and textures, which will create a stimulating learning environment for children's tweens and teens. We do plan to have exposed ceilings on the second floor, and we have discussed the addition of canopies or acoustical clouds. This view shows administrative offices on the right, as well as the two study rooms planned for the second floor. Please keep in mind that the images presented tonight do not depict any furniture. We're excited for this opportunity to expand our shelving. We are currently at maximum capacity and have to make difficult decisions regarding weeding and withdrawing of our materials. Many of our patrons have noted that our existing shelving in the children's area is too tall, and we are forced to put books out of reach of some of our youngest readers. We face a similar dilemma in the large print section. It is difficult for some patrons to reach high or bend low. Our goal is to design an accessible and inviting library for all ages, and we are thankful for the opportunity to do so.
So now on to the development financing for the project. There are four main components to the development financing. First, partner equity, which is being put in by the partners, which would be $3.6 million. New market tax credits, which would comprise a total of $3.758 million. A city TIF contribution of $2 million, and then a bank loan from the developer for $6,818, for a total project cost of $16,176,000. I would also note, though, the city would be contributing the current library building and site, which is conservatively valued at $575,000. I'm sorry, $575,000, an important detail. With respect to the financing, I will say that redevelopment proposals of this size often require financial assistance to help pay for the associated costs, costs associated with site acquisition, demolition, and costs, in this case, the addition of underground parking. The city did engage Ellers, an independent financial consultant that works exclusively for public entities to validate the need of the requested public support. For the city's $2 million TIF investment, it would be recaptured through increased taxes generated by the project. The development agreement includes guaranteed tax increments, meaning that the developer is guaranteeing a minimum amount of taxes, regardless of the assessed value associated with the property. And the total value of those guaranteed tax increments is $2.685 million, or the equivalent of 20 payments from 2017 through 2036. The remaining $315,000 of the total obligation of $3 million could be potentially captured through district or donor district TIF revenue. Also, part of the deal is a lease agreement. And this is an important point, but new market tax credits can only be used for private development, and so a lease agreement is required during the seven-year life of the credits. The city's lease payments would be $1.5 million over seven years. And you'll notice, we also talk about a seven-to-eight-year lease. The reason why there's that slight discrepancy is that the new market tax credits end after seven years, but it takes some period of time to close those credits out. So the lease would actually read eight years, just to give us the wiggle room to get that process done. And then the lease payments themselves would be paid through a combination of potential tax increment from the project, district or donor district TIF revenue, and potentially general tax revenue. So the creativity in this agreement is that, because of the public-private partnership, is that you're able to actually use tax increment generated from the TIF district to offset the costs for this new building that will house the library, which is normally not allowed. Buildings with TIF dollars is normally not allowed. But there's also risk with the agreement, and I want to be clear about that. There is no guarantee that the library will be gifted to the city at the end of seven years. The legal and financing requirements associated with the project won't allow mandatory gifting language in the agreement. And I was happy to see Farshad from Wida step in the room, because he's here tonight, and he gets beat more directly to that particular issue. There are strong incentives for the owners to gift the library, and the city does retain the right to continue leasing and the right of first refusal to purchase in the event that the library was not gifted. There's also a potential risk with bankruptcy. I want to note that a pro forma review was done by Ellers in addition to the new market tax credit and bank lenders. So this project has definitely been put under a lot of scrutiny with respect to its viability. The bank would have the first lien on the property, but investors have given personal guarantees to the city that they would cover the guaranteed tax payments in the event of bankruptcy. So for the project timeline, if it moves forward, from November to January of this year, we complete the approvals, they start hazardous material abatement, and the demolition of the existing buildings. The construction period would be roughly from February to November for the Hotel and Library, and then the clinic remodel would follow roughly in the December to February of 2017 timeframe. With respect to next steps, we had originally hoped to have council approval on November 10, but we're here on the 24th. We already have a resolution for a bond sale if we move forward. We would still need to do a lease agreement with respect to the library and the commercial building, and there would still be some needed planning commission approvals. So with that, I'd actually like to turn things over to Stephen Roy to kind of give you an update on the latest draft of the developers' agreement, which is what we passed out earlier this evening.
Thank you, Karen. As I recall from the last time I appeared before this thing, you have to be careful with the... I assume it's still the same. What you have before you tonight is the latest draft of the developers' agreement that now has also the comments or the changes that the new market tax rate credit attorneys have vetted or gone through, as well as the bank's counsel. The changes that are here in this agreement primarily revolve around a change in the structure of how the new market tax credit loan is going to be done. Previously, we've always considered the loan coming to Miners Development, the LLC, which is the developer. And that's still indeed the case. However, due to a restriction in the new market tax rate credits, is there is a second vessel, a second LLC, and that entity is going to be the one that is the actual recipient of the loan proceeds. And that vessel will build the building. It'll have the contract with the contractors. It will lease the building to us. So those changes have been reflected in here to say that that second vessel, which is called Platteville Hotel Partners, that that entity is what's going to lease back to us. Miners is going to be the owner of the land, okay? And we will still be in the same position we were previously, which is secondary. We're right behind the bank. So whatever the bank is going to get for security, we get secondary position right behind that, okay? None of the dates have changed. None of the numbers have changed. We're still at the same $2 million TIF contribution. We still have the same lease. And there was another small minor change. There's a... When we contribute our $2 million, it will go into what they call a simultaneous closing. And then our money will ultimately get separated out and be only used for TIF-eligible expenses. So in this particular project, blight elimination is an example of that, the land acquisition costs, asbestos removal, all of those kinds of things that are part of our TIF plan. Then the dispersing agent will be the person who... As long as they receive invoices for those items, et cetera, then they can use our $2 million for doing that. Other than that, that was the only set of big changes that occurred since our previous draft of this agreement, which is like version 20 or something like that. Any questions that you folks have?
Can you explain, Stephen, a little bit more about why that Miners Development to the Platteville change for the Wida tax credits occurred?
Sure. I hope, I hope. We're kind of on the back end of all of this, but what has been explained to me, and Farshad may be able to speak to this more annoyingly, or will would be able to, is under the federal code, when the new market tax credits are granted, that that entity that is getting those credits doesn't grant a security interest in any assets. That's not the granting entity. So they create this LLC to be the lender, I mean, the borrower, and it gets, and it receives the money. It's obligated to do the building. It is the person who leases to us, et cetera. If you, if it were to grant a security interest in anything that it might own, all right, that would violate the terms of that, and then you can't get the new market tax credits.
Okay.
So what they do is they do this little game, so to speak, whereby the land is actually owned by the developing entity. That's the one that mortgages the property, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And it then has a 50-year lease with the Platteville Hotel Partners. And that lease is rather draconian. If they hiccup the wrong way, the property comes... Whatever Platteville's got at that moment in time comes back to Miners. And so, in other words, the bank has 100% security on it then at that point. And we, of course, are after them. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think that helps. Thanks.
I hope so. Farshad, I hope I said it right. Probably didn't.
I learned yesterday that the Wisconsin Bank and Trust is no longer the bank.
Correct.
And can you comment as to why there was a change? The bank is now from Cedar Rapids?
Yeah, we weren't part of any of that, so I'm not going to be able to comment as to why it happened. But the new entity is correct. You had the correct name for it, and it could have been a number of reasons. Troy may be able to speak to that when he speaks.
Any other questions for Stephen regarding the...
Oh, I do have one.
Yep.
In our discussion earlier, we're talking about the lease, the seven-year lease. I didn't hear anything about the other option that could be up to five different... that could be up to five different four-year leases and extension. Is that still in effect?
Good question, good point, yes. It is, and it's longer than what we had before. Those were the parameters that we were discussing last month, et cetera. Now with this change in financing and financial institution, et cetera, the, there are going to be 12 options, okay? For three years apiece. So a total of 50 years along with our original. Now again, we only are going to need that lease as a backup if in the event some disaster occurred and we weren't able to receive the gift of the property back at the end of our initial seven-year term, okay? So just to review, the whole idea here is that we lease the property for the initial term of the New Market Tax Rate Credits, which is seven years. At that time, the developer is then free to gift the property back to us, okay? And, but we needed a backup plan to cover us if in the event that didn't happen for some reason, all right? There are a lot of reasons why it should happen and why it would happen, et cetera. But being cautious, you have to have something that backs you up. So these additional terms or options to continue to lease the property are important to the city. A, we get to keep the library. But B, it also ensures that anybody who would ultimately take over that project, let's say there's some financial disaster as far as the developer is concerned, that that person would have to recognize our lease, and they would have to continue leasing to us.
Now, one other issue, one other point I'd like to hear. Will the price be required to remain the same as the first seven years?
No. The price, by price, I assume you mean rent.
The lease rent, yes.
Correct. The clause that, or the requirement that's in the developer agreement and that will be in the initial lease document is for each one of those rental period options, the rental rate is whatever the fair market rental rate for our kind of building is in the city of Plattville. And that would be determined by a professional real estate appraiser who does rental rate appraisers for our area.
Thank you.
Yep.
I want to ask one more question, and this one's kind of redundant.
Yep.
The best of your knowledge, this is the final document as is. Like, you're not aware of any other outstanding conversations, right?
Oh, Amy, I'd love to tell you that. Their closing on this is scheduled for December... I'm going to have the date wrong, 16th or something like that. Literally, there are eight, nine attorneys who work on this thing and have phone calls about this once a week or something of that nature. We're not involved in that. It's all related to this New Market Tax Credit stuff. So as background, so I can't promise you that there won't be some minor change, et cetera. But this embodies all the major points. It embodies all of our security. It embodies all of our financial commitment that we have to make. Those things don't change. But there have been small examples of little things that have had to change. This dispersing agreement, in the very initial draft of this document, that dispersing agreement was going to be a separate document that was all by itself. And now it's getting incorporated into something else, you know? So does it change it? No. Does it necessitate a change in the agreement? Yeah, we need to move it down a paragraph. And it's, so it's those kinds of things. But the major stuff, those terms haven't changed at all.
Thank you.
Yep.
Stephen, I have a question about the lease agreement and then the extensions.
Yep.
This building is totally taxable as long as it's owned by the developer.
Correct.
And so if in fact there were a lease extension in year eight, I mean, part of the gifting of this part of the building would take it off the tax roll.
Correct.
Because it would take that 22,000 square foot area off the tax roll, which is one of the incentives for gifting, so you're not paying taxes. But if there were a lease extension, then the property would be privately held and therefore pay regular real estate tax.
That's indeed correct, correct.
Any other questions from council members?
Thank you.
We may ask again because we're going to go to public comment next, Stephen. So, and then we have the, both the gentlemen over here an opportunity to speak, and we may call you back up.
All right, thank you.
So thank you. So we have had a number of people asked to speak, and we've had a number of people register but not asking to speak. So one of the first ones that was on my desk was James Schneller. So, James, if you would come up to the podium, please. Give your name and address. And he has registered to speak against. And we do ask that you limit yourself to five minutes. And I'll watch the clock and give you like a one-finger salute that...
You know, I don't know if it's really so much against. It just depends on what the goal is, right? The goal of this whole thing originally was a library. That was it. That was the goal. So I'm not against a library. However, where this has gotten to, I am. So I want to clarify that. So the first thing I want to mention is in Karen's presentation, in the history, there was missing the January 2015 public forum where this project was first laid out and put to the public. In that, by the way, in which I think there was a lot of support for it, during that time, it was laid out as 1.2 million in TIF funds. And if those who were there remember, that wasn't listed in the presentation. I asked our then-city manager three times how much that would be. The developer at that time stood up with calculator in hand and announced $1.2 million max. So that was, that came from the developer themselves. Also, it was going to be $1 per year for seven years, and the library would go to the city. In this public forum, the input was sought from the public. Now we'll go to October 27th. And contrary to what I believe Jesse had said, there was no discernible public input during that 10 months. It was closed session. It was in the city manager's, the previous city manager's office, and so forth. The real public presentation of this occurred the 27th. Now, it's 2 million in TIF funds, nearly 70% increase. Eight years of rent, by the way. In the presentation, it said seven. The developers' agreement, at least the version that I read, says eight. Rent, not at a dollar a year, but at $18,333 a month, approximately $220,000 a year, for a total of 1.76 million, significantly different than seven bucks. There's no guarantee that the library would be turned over. And all of this was done out of the public's view or without their input. It was only at this time that it was brought forth. And then two weeks later, it was on the agenda to be approved without getting the public input. So the guaranteed income of 2.685 million over 20 years, at best, at best, supports the $2 million. And that's only if your interest rate is roughly 1.49%, if my calculation is correct. So if your interest rate is more than that, then it doesn't even support that piece of the debt. And I assume, I think all of you got Dan Rohrbach's assessment that he did on his own. He said it's 2 million in TIF funds, 800K for the library, which I see has now been changed back to 575. It was published at eight in the presentation. 1.76 in rent, interest of probably 700 to a million during the 20 years, over 20 years. Total investment of, and even backing off the library, maybe 1 point, or 5.1 to 5.6. General figures, guaranteed income of 2.685. That's all that's guaranteed on it. So you've got a deficit of somewhere around probably 2.6 to 2.9 when you're done with this. You've got rent beyond the initial eight-year term at market. Well, I guarantee it's going to be more than the roughly $10 per square foot that it is now. I would suspect that most people would figure that that would be the case. So your rate will probably go up. And I think you said 20 years, so, or what is it now? No, I guess it's changed now. So that, so, you know, a couple of other things to consider, too. The configuration doesn't even meet the original desire that came out of the committee that you mentioned that was convened. They wanted specifically a one-story library. Karen, one of your budget goals in the previous session, which everybody turned out for, by the way, was good jobs for the project. Now, I don't begrudge any development project, but the simple fact is this is not going to bring many jobs at all, and the majority of them will be lower income. So just to make sure I get my, within my five minutes, the conclusions here that I just want to make. The library was the goal. It was always a stated goal, and it's been stated several times tonight. The library is the goal. It's much more costly than it was presented in January. And it really doesn't matter what got us to this point. It doesn't matter that Wida caused things to happen. The developer needed things. Other people needed things. It really doesn't matter. It's what was presented and what is the end cost that you're going to potentially approve or be asked to approve. So on top of all that, it went, there was been no public forum other than this turnout, which is a result of luckily you're not passing this or having things ready on the 10th, and some emails and a letter to the editor. That's the only way a lot of this has gotten out. Most important, I think, is the no public input. And you aren't guaranteed of the goal. You are not guaranteed a library. Now, if I would have done this, and I've lived in this city. I was born here and lived all of my life here, except for a couple of mistaken years when I moved to Iowa. I would not expect you, and you know me, you know my support for the city. I would, I would be, I would not expect you to have me sign a deal that says, yeah, trust me, I'll do it. You have a fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers of this city. And in essence, you're gambling that the developer will hand this over to you. There's, I keep hearing about the incentives for the developer to do so. At $220,000 a year rent for potentially 50 years, that's pretty damn good incentive, too, to keep the building. You don't have a guarantee. So I'm asking, I guess, that in the lease, that you table this and you put, have a public forum and do the presentation just like was done in January when this project was first presented. Get the public input. And I think, you know, here again, remember what the goal was. The goal was a library, period. That's what this all started out from, a library. You aren't guaranteed a library, and you're supporting something else. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person who's asked to speak against is Mariah Hall. I hope I got the name right.
It's Hall.
And again, five minutes, please.
Hi, my name is Mariah Hall. I'm actually here, my husband and I and my mother-in-law actually own the Super 8 in town. So we are here, I'm here as a business owner. And I would like to follow what Jim Schneller's saying. We are totally not against a library. That it's a good thing for the community. My family uses it a lot. That's not what this is about. Basically, what it boils down to for us is for this new hotel to succeed, the other hotels are going to suffer. And we are a huge tax base right now for the community. I'm not sure where all the feasibility studies were. I don't know what happened with that. But knowing the inside of our business, I know that the city cannot handle another hotel. I know that it can't. For instance, Saturday night, we had 11 rooms. So I'm not sure how these numbers that they're throwing at you with these ADRs and the $70 and these occupancy rates, the only way they can happen is if the other hotels take a hit. And I just don't believe that that is a fair thing for the city to be doing, is to be giving someone else money at the detriment of our business. A lot of the things that Jim had said, I completely agree with. If we're just looking for a library, then that's what we should build. You know, we can find the funds. We can do that. There's no guarantees with this. The only guarantees is that it's going to hurt current businesses. And that should never be the city's thoughts. So I would like you guys to really think about that. Bringing in a new hotel is not going to bring in more people. The only time you ever go to a town just to stay at a hotel is if you're going to like the Dells. I mean, you're not going to come to Plattville just because there's a brand-new hotel. It's not going to be a draw. There's probably about 12 days out of the year that I would say, based on my knowledge, that we could actually handle another hotel. Other than that, we're not full. So I would really like you guys to think about that because you really will be just hurting current businesses by allowing this to go through.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We have also had three people register to speak in favor. Marilyn Gatchak, first person.
Marilyn Gatchak, 235 Virgin Avenue. And just for your information, I am on the library board. And I have written some comments because I don't want to wander. And I am simply asking that the council vote yes on the city's library block redevelopment project. You've heard a lot of information tonight, and I think probably a lot of it is going to take some time to digest. But it is true that in, we have talked about a new library for many years. And we desperately do need one. We need a library in terms of the space, which is not adequate. We need a library to meet the demands for the kind of information and the way we access it. It's not just books anymore. So I'm asking that, looking to the future, I also would like to give credit to an incredible library staff. We have a wonderful group of people who are very dedicated working in, I'm sorry, substandard conditions in the library. And we have the opportunity to put up something that will serve the citizens of Plattville for many years to come. So I am hoping that you will see your way clear to a yes vote. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person is Jack Ludkey.
Excuse me. My name is Jack Ludkey. I'm the executive director for the Plattville Main Street Program. And I'm here tonight just to speak on behalf of the Main Street businesses. And we have, over the last couple of weeks, taken an informal survey of the opinions of several of the Main Street businesses. And they are all, of course, in favor of the project and for a number of reasons. And it's not just the library part, it's the entire project, which will lend a vibrancy and a... and a level of visitors to the downtown businesses that we have not experienced in the past. If you remember, the McGregor Plaza was probably the last major development in the downtown area, which is the heart of our community, and that was over 40 years ago. The businesses see this as an opportunity for the first development of significant proportion in the downtown area to continue to augment the vitality of that area, and also could be the catalyst for future development on the vacant now Pioneer Ford site, which the city is considering to develop. And we also recognize that, as was pointed out here, that with a development of this size, there is always an element of risk, no matter what that development may be. And we just feel the council has done, over a long period of time, a lot of soul-searching and has called in a lot of consultants to help them arrive at what we would hope to be a favorable decision on this development. Now, the merchants also recognize that they are a special interest group. They have a stake in this development, because it will bring additional people to their doors, restaurants, the shops, and even some of the other non-service-oriented businesses, which are not retail. And for a long time, it has been desired to have a hotel closer to the university that will serve the needs of the largest person or group of people that come to the community for interviews or for interaction with the university. So having said that, the merchants recognize, as I said, that they are a special interest group as well. And based on some of the opening comments tonight, we hope the council can see that there is a special interest activity involved in not having this development come to fruition as well. So having said all of that, we just thank the council. We know that you'll make the right decision, whatever that decision may be, and we hope it does favor the development. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Bill Kloster. I live at 975 Highbury Circle here in Platteville, and I'd like to speak in favor of this project. I think Platteville needs a new library that can incorporate new technology and aid residents who might not have things like access to high-speed internet and a lot of other technology advancements that are available, but not to everybody. I'm also the executive director of the UW Platteville Real Estate Foundation, which has been involved in developing student housing projects here in Platteville. And from almost the beginning of this project, we were involved, and we're trying to include a student housing component to the library project. But in June of 2014, the Real Estate Foundation Board made the decision, based on a conversation we had with the developer, to withdraw, not because we didn't have faith in the project, but because we really wanted this project to succeed. And with having the student housing component in the project, it would have driven up the requirement for parking considerably, and it probably would have made it too hard to do. And that's why we withdrew from that project. I think Platteville needs to move forward in this public service area, and we've heard a lot of numbers thrown out here tonight from various, various things on calculations of the financing, which is the cold, hard facts. But there's one thing we need to really consider. How much is it worth to have a facility that has all the technology and the capability for one student from Platteville to become really interested in something and become a success? How much is it worth to the city to have a place where you can have programs for young people, places for them to go, things for them to do, so they don't get in trouble and end up across the street over here? We need to think about those things as well. This is something that Platteville, I think, really needs, to start moving forward and make it a place that people really want to come to. And so I would really like the council to vote to approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you. We had a number of other individuals who registered in favor but did not request to speak, and I will read their names. Mark Iam, Kay Young, Jane Dunham, Heidi Dyson Beth, John Patakos, Betsy Ralph Telliffson, Molly Zilke, German Vasquez, I'm sorry if I'm not pronouncing your name correctly, I should be. It looks like Dustin Westeby, Catherine Burke, Paige Leahy, Angie Wright, Julie Luffaholes, Kim Schreck, Darren Shireman, Morrissey Printing, Tim Ingram and Melissa Gormley, Aisha Durst, Deborah Rice, Timothy Durst, Natasha and Christopher Geier, and I'm sorry, but Alan Jensen, you did not, Mark, if you wanted to speak or if you were in favor or not, so...
Oh, I'm in favor, sorry.
Sorry?
I'm in favor.
Okay, good, you're in favor, all right. And I did just receive, I'm sorry, I need to add, if I can find my page here, I did receive some emails also relative to this project in favor, and those emails were from Stephen Clyseth, Betsy Telliffson, she also came tonight, Alice Rexed and Joan Rexed. The Chamber of Commerce did provide us a letter indicating that they did have some of the similar questions that Mr. Schneller had, and would appreciate it if we would note that in the, in the process this evening. I don't know if this is online in their chamber site, it might be. We did just receive one more, and it is a request to speak for information only.
My name is Jim Rosemeyer, and I live at 1275 North Fourth. I don't have a horse in this race. Matter of fact, I think my wife uses this library three times a week. She loves it. My daughter-in-law, who is a teacher at the middle school, uses it every day, and they love it. There's no question that we need a new library. There's no question that everyone in this room is for a new library. The question is, is this the way we want to get it? And, you know, do we want to spend this amount of money without any guarantees? Is there a better deal? And did you give everybody in Platteville enough chance to voice your opinion on the new proposals? I'm not sure you did. Whether, I don't know whose fault that is, maybe it was nobody's fault. So I would ask you to delay it. Not forego it, delay it. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, you marked the wrong one?
I might have.
Okay, I really don't want to make a bunch of changes, so...
That's what you...
Okay. And we do have two, two individuals that we are going to ask also to speak to this issue. One is Farshad Maltese, who is with WIDA, and also Troy Hoekstra, who is the developer. So Farshad, would you...
I'd actually like to defer my five minutes to Farshad. I think what he has to say is...
I'm sorry, can't hear you. You want to come up to the microphone?
I just want to know if I can defer my five minutes to Farshad.
Yes, we will actually, actually...
I think that is from him, it's probably more value with the new market credits and guarantees.
Right. And actually, we would like you also to speak, and if you will come up to the microphone, And if you will give your name for the record and your affiliation. And for information, obviously, we have heard a request for us to delay this decision tonight, and there is on the agenda an action item, so both things are on the table.
Hi, my name's Farshad Maltese. I'm the Director of Business Development for WIDA, the Wisconsin Housing and Economic Development Authority, and one of my responsibilities is that I administered a new market tax credit program on behalf of WIDA. And should I just try to address some of the issues? Okay.
Could you, before you address the issues, could you just explain what new market tax credits are, in case there's somebody in the audience...
Okay, no, no, sure.
...that has never heard of what that is?
The new market tax credit is a tax credit to try to encourage investment in rural communities and underserved communities. And the tax credit basically provides about 20 to 25 percent, covers about 20 to 25 percent of the costs of an eligible project. That's a project that's located in a qualifying census tract. And so, you know, on a $10 million deal, it would cover about, you know, 2 to 2.5 million that would be provided as an interest-only seven-year note, for, you know, and which at the end of the seven-year period, the loan gets essentially transferred to the bar, where it kind of acts like a forgiveness, but we do this put-call option so that there isn't a tax event at the end of the seven years. But bottom line is, it's a subsidy that provides between 20 to 25 percent of the total eligible costs, you know, of a project. And we provided, you know, an allocation of $10 million of new market tax credit allocation. That's the qualifying amount. The total, you know, subsidy for the project is around 4.6 million, just so you're aware of the amount that's being provided. Now, you may ask, well, why did we pick this project rather than a whole bunch of other projects? Because this is very, you can imagine how competitive it is to get, you know, this resource. Well, we actually were attracted to this project for, because it had two important components that the developer was willing to agree to do in addition to a hotel. I want to be clear, if this project was a hotel alone, we probably wouldn't have provided the tax credits. What made it a compelling project for us, and why we approved the tax credits for it, is because it had two public purposes. It had a public library, where the developer was going to agree to donate the library at the end of the seven-year period, and I want to make it clear that that's also a condition or important to me as well, okay? And secondly, the developer agreed to also provide below-market, below-market rent to a health center that's going to be run by Southwest Cap Services to provide health services to folks that, you know, low-income individuals or individuals that don't have health insurance. So it was those two aspects of the project that compelled us, or we made it a compelling project for us to provide this $4.5 million of subsidy in partnership with another entity called the Forward Community Investments. I just should make that clear. So you may ask, well, Farshad, how would you give these guys, you know, this subsidy and have no guarantee, you know, that the library is actually going to be donated? Well, here's the problem. For the library to be considered a donation for tax purposes, there can't be any quid pro quo. That is, the developer can't essentially say, all right, I will give you the library if you do X, Y, or Z. So they have to give the library without any type of conditions related to it, that there's no exchange of any kind of agreement that says that they must do the library, you know, donate the library for X, Y, or Z. If he were to, if a developer agrees to that, they can't take the, it's not considered a contribution, it's not considered a donation, and then there's no tax benefit, and therefore that takes a big economic incentive away from the developer, you know, donating the library, okay? So we could have nothing contractually that obligates the developer to give the library, you know, away. Now, mind you, that's a problem for me as well. I'm giving them $4.5 million because I want a library, not just because I want a hotel. So how do we, you know, deal with that? Well, there's another part of a new market tax credit transaction, which is, remember that $4.5 million loan? Troy has to essentially gamble that I'm going to essentially transfer that note to him, essentially forgive the note at the end of the seven-year period. And you know what? For technical reasons, he cannot have any legal binding type of agreement with me that I will do that. So let's say we come in, you know, seven years later, I know. So I want to make it clear, the developer is taking the risk that I'm not going to forgive the note, okay? And in the same way that you guys are taking the risk that, you know, he wouldn't donate the library. So the reason I feel comfortable, and you know, and WIDA feels comfortable going forward with the deal, and having pretty clear assurance that this library is actually going to be donated, is he doesn't donate the library, he owes me $4.5 million at the end of the seven-year period, and I'll just enforce that, you know, I just won't forgive the note. I won't exercise this put-call option, you know, that, that would be required for me to hand the, you know, the, to essentially write off that $4.5 million. So I just want to make it clear that there is a way to, you know, to, from our perspective at least, to have some certainty, or at least that there would be a great penalty to Troy, to the developer, if he were actually not to donate the library. But the irony is, in both of these contracts, there can be absolutely nothing that, you know, says that that's how you're going to, you know, that you're going to do it. Now, you may ask, well, Farshad, why can't you have, why can't Troy ask for assurances that I'm going to forgive the note at the end of the seven-year period? Because if I did that, this call option would not be considered an investment. It would be considered strictly a tax shelter, and that would be illegal, and he wouldn't be able to get a write-off, or, you know, be able to avoid the tax implications of exercising that option. So that's why, you know, he's, I want to make it clear that Troy is also assuming great risk, you know, that we wouldn't, for whatever reason, after seven years, just choose not to forgive his note, or to exercise that option and essentially transfer the interest of that note over, you know, to him. The other issue I'd like to address is, well, what about this, you know, why not have, like, the $1 lease issue? You know, why not just have the, you know, some type of below-subsidized lease moving forward? That is required because we, there was an appraisal done, and the appraisal came down to a very, very low valuation, much lower, frankly, I was very surprised. I think we all were surprised by how low the valuation was. Part of that, to be frank, is that the appraiser just didn't understand, I don't think, all of the economic, you know, benefits of the deal. But that's neither here nor there. Now, why would that matter? What matters because in a tax credit deal, all of the debt, including, you know, that $4.5 million, it can't be more than 100 percent of the value of the project. And the appraisal was well below the total amount of, you know, debt that would have been on the project, you know, including this $4.5 million essentially forgivable note. So how did we deal with that? Well, there's a different way to value a property besides just, you know, depending on an appraisal. The other way to do it is by the net present value of the expected future cash flows. So that's why we had to have a lease arrangement that, you know, had a high enough lease payment to justify a high enough valuation to go forward, you know, with the transaction. But it also, is also a reason for why, again, there can't be an absolute promise by Troy to give the library away, because that would reduce the expected valuation of those, you know, future cash flows. And I understand, this is very, you know, this is a very complex, you know, transaction. But what I do want to say is that it does provide, bring in $4.5 million of subsidy that will build a wonderful hotel. You know, Troy has been designated, or, you know, he won an award for being the best developer in Holiday Inn Expresses in the country. And, you know, that's one of the reasons that WIDA has worked with Troy, not just on this project, but on other projects, you know. The final point I'd like to address is the market. We have never, we never want to have an intent of, you know, essentially knocking out local, you know, operators of business. We want to support them and encourage them. But, you know, a common critique I sometimes hear when I fund hotel developments is, well, this hotel is going to somehow cannibalize business, you know, from something that's local. In the case of a Ms. Hall's business, what I would argue is, Troy's hotel is not going to take away your clientele. It's not that clientele. The people that would stay at Troy's hotel are most likely going to stay in Dubuque. So what you're doing by having Troy's hotel come in is having people that would stay in a hotel in Dubuque most likely stay here in Platteville, or a good, a good portion of that clientele. And again, I say that as somebody that's financed over $120 million of hotels and who's had to deal with this type of issue, you know, quite a bit. Again, if we saw direct cannibalization in a project, you know, we wouldn't fund it. But we feel, again, it's our professional opinion that we're not going to see much cannibalization here. What we're actually going to see is more market come in from, you know, from other areas, from, that they just wouldn't naturally have stayed at the hotel in Platteville. They would have stayed in Dubuque, you know, instead. So I just... So I just, again, I just wanted to bring that overview to this and, you know, hope that, that the deal looks a little bit more understandable. But I do want to make it clear that we think this is a signature project. And it's ironic that I'm likely going to talk to the city of Madison about this project for, as a model for what they could do with the Judge Doyle project that they're doing. Because, you know, there, they're giving $44 million away, and you know what they're getting? I'll be honest, nothing. You know, you guys are getting a health center, a wonderful library, and one final thing, you're getting a developer that I, who will be a good corporate citizen, and I think would be very interested in really investing in this community. And I think that you will see that, again, I've seen that in Troy's other projects, and I'm very happy to, you know, support this. The final point I would make is that, I'm from Plattville too. My full name is Fershad Razazadeh Maltez. My mom was Gloria Razazadeh, some of you guys know, I know Marilyn, you guys know. And, you know, she was a librarian at UWP Plattville. And so it's very special for me. I wish she could have seen that I was going to be involved in funding a library in Plattville. So this project is very special to me, and I'm very proud of being part of it, and I hope that you will support it. Thank you.
Oh, question?
Yeah. Fershad?
If you could come back to the microphone just one minute, Troy, we have a question.
Quick question for you, sir. Fershad?
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. I'll wave you down. Quick question. Maybe you could also explain to the folks here, one of the reasons that this took us so long to get through all this, because if I'm correct, when the federal government issues new market tax credits to your organization to utilize, it's not to be used for public buildings. Is that correct? The money itself is not supposed to be used for public buildings, so we had to do things some differently?
You cannot provide the tax credits directly to a municipal entity.
Thank you.
Yes.
Explain that to them.
So that's why we had, we have to have another entity that, you know, owns the library, and then, you know, norm, traditionally, the way we've structured these deals where there's a quasi-public, you know, interest is, you have a developer, either private sector, or maybe like a redevelopment authority, own the, you know, the library property, and then the library leases that property during the seven-year period, and then there might be some option to purchase at the end of the, of the seven-year period. That's how we structured a deal with a library deal like this in Milwaukee, just so you know. And we also did this for a villager mall project in Madison where the community development authority was the actual owner of the property. But you're absolutely right. I couldn't give the tax credits to a municipality, to the city of Plattville directly.
Thank you.
Now you know I wanted to give him my five minutes. It's a lot more compelling. I'm going to keep, I had some points, he took all my points. I'll keep my, my points very succinct, because I know we're getting late and everybody probably wants to go home. There's sort of this overlying debate. How do we know? How do we know this greedy developer is going to give us this library, right? I want to walk through the simple math, because we've heard a ton of numbers. Here's the simple math of this project. If I would go to that block right now and bulldoze that block and just do my hotel and do a parking lot, it would cost me 18, or about $8.2 million. In seven years, including my $3 million down payment that we have, I would have $4.3 million in debt. Very simple. If anybody wants to check my numbers, you can, I'm happy to share them, put them in the paper, whatever you want to do. This deal, $3 million down, in seven years, I'm going to have $5.2 million in debt. So I'm going to be in debt 900 grand more if I do this versus if I don't do this. So why would I do that? The only reason I would do that is to donate this library and donate this clinic and take the charitable contribution to offset that loss. Otherwise, it makes no sense for us to do it, from an investment perspective.
Questions?
I do have a question for you, Troy.
Your way.
There's been some question marks about the present building that, that houses what's supposed to take over for Southwest, you know.
Right.
Has that been purchased yet?
We didn't close on the clinic because they're there operating, and we had no, no reason to, you know, sort of evict them and move them to a temporary location. So the plan is to move them to a temporary location. It's going to cost us $57,100 to do that. I'm not going to see a penny of that back. And in about 14, 15 months, when this is done and we renovate the existing library, they'll move back in there. And because they're a nonprofit and their budgets are very small, we've agreed to keep their lease at the current rate of their payment, which is $1,290 a month. And I can tell you that leasing them, that building for that price is not a good deal for me. But we're doing it to meet the public policy goals and because we think it's the right thing to do.
Comments? Actually, I don't want to turn this into a debate, so I, I do apologize to Molly Zelke. I read that you had registered only in support, and you did ask to speak. If you'd like to speak, I will give you the opportunity. It was my error.
My name's Molly Zelke. I live at 235 East Dewey Street. And I've been following this from the background as a community member, and I think one of the things that we're not talking about is, how much would it cost us to get a library if we didn't do this deal? How much would it cost to build us a new, wonderful library on this block that everyone supports? I know that the small library in Lancaster is costing that city over $3 million, almost $4 million for a much smaller development. So this deal is going to get us, even if you take the conservative numbers that we saw in the paper, and please correct me, Jim, if I'm wrong, I think $2 million it's going to cost us with the rent, et cetera, right? Three, okay, let's say we're going to get this fabulous new library downtown that my kids can ride their bike and walk to for $3 million. It's a $6 million building, correct? There is no other way, $7 million building, that we're going to get, even when we take, you know, the conservative estimates, that's a $3 million building, we're getting out of it. So yes, this did change a little bit from the original idea, and I understand people that are a little bit worried about it. But frankly, that block looks awful. If we want to develop the Pioneer Lot, we have got to do something with it. And all of our development cannot go out by the highway. Some of it's there. It's awesome. It looks beautiful when you drive into town. But if we let this downtown fall apart, it's already falling apart, if you ask me. If we continue to let it fall apart, no one's going to want to come to college here. None of the professors that we're losing now are going to want to move here. They're going to stay in Madison, not increase our tax base. So I don't really understand why this win-win is being argued against when it's only being argued against to line a few people's pockets, frankly. So I want my kids to have this new library, and I don't want to have to pay my tax dollars for it. So this seems like a really good deal. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, the problem I have, Jim, is if I let you respond, then I'm going to probably have to let everyone start responding. I think you've made your points, and we appreciate it.
It's been insinuated, things that are wrong.
It's time for council discussion. Any questions for the developer? Any questions for Mr. Maltez?
Well.
Yes.
I'll respond to what you just went through here. I'd like to know how people feel about this. Mr. Schneller, for example, what he thinks about it now after he's heard all this information. I think he should be allowed to speak.
All right. I'm going to say that if you want Mr. Schneller to come back up here, I will let Mr. Schneller come back up here. If there's someone else who spoke in favor that wants to come back up here, I will also let you. Mr. Schneller, please come back to the podium and do comments.
Listen, I don't want this to get into a debate either. But I'm going to, I want to take exception to some of the insinuations. So it's been insinuated, and there's no doubt, there's some self-interest on my part, because, Troy, your project stops any potential, and it has, of a hotel out in Keystone Development. That said, when this thing was first publicly presented on January 21st or 22nd at 6:00 PM in the Wisconsin Bank and Trust Community Room, a lot of questions were asked. I did not oppose it, even though it was, it was against my self-interest. I abdicated my self-interest, as did the other hotel owners in town, because it was a good deal for the city. So there was no opposition. There was no verbal opposition. I heard nothing to it. So, so first of all, I ask that, that those folks who, by Jack's own admission, are a self-interest group as well, take a look at this objectively, not, not just because you're getting some more people downtown, I understand that, is it, and, and the folks that want the library, is it the best thing for the city to spend this? Fershad? Yeah. As you mentioned, quote, "Nothing contractually obligates the developer to donate the library." Here again, nothing contractually dev, uh, obligates anything for you to get that. Now, intents, I'm not going to say that he has bad intent, I have no, no, but I'm not. But, but the simple fact is, you think you're getting a library, you may or may not. He has presented a compelling case for donating that. However, even if the rents stay the same, $200,000 a year on a building is pretty good incentive to keep it as well. Probably, arguably, 50 percent more or better than that by the time your eight, eight years are up, because $10 a square foot is pretty reasonable rent for that type of building. Fershad, you've mentioned, or maybe Troy, I don't remember, the complexity of this thing. And there's no doubt that this has gotten extremely complex. But that, it, that really doesn't matter. It doesn't. It's what was proposed, what it is now, is this thing still a good deal? And, and there is a significant amount of money that the city puts out, right? $2 million upfront plus interest, the rent of a minimum of 1.76 million, right, for eight years, at $18,333 a month. The library, present library, if you count that in, somewhere between 575 and 8, depending. So, so there's a significant amount of money that, that is being invested by the city into this. Would it be better to let the developer go ahead and do that without a lot of the city incentives and build the library? I'm just saying, I think you need to step back and take a look at it objectively. I have nothing against Troy, or nothing against him trying to come in and do a good job. And certainly, he's got the credentials, but I think, I think you, as the council, need to step back and say, the goal was a library. That was the goal. Are there other, other alternatives to doing that, and have they been explored? That's all I'm saying. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else who spoke in favor or against that would like to add any other comments? Yes, you come up to the podium, please, and make your comments.
I didn't fill that out right. My bifocals must not be working, but anyway. So just a little bit of history for myself. Unfortunately, like Jim, I don't live in Plattville today. I do intend to get here someday and retire here. My family settled here in the mid-1800s, came here, purchased land, and been farming that land ever since. My father was born in that hospital that's proposed to be torn down in 1929. The last time I was in this room was 1976 for my parents' 25th wedding anniversary. So went to grade school here, went to, to the church across from the library there, confirmed there, and had every intent of continuing the farming tradition, but the 80s struck and it was time to do something else. So my father informed me I wasn't coming back to the farm till I finished college. So I went to UWP and I guess music appreciation was the best class. I met, met my first wife there, and 28 years later, she's still my first wife, so. So, so anyway, believe it or not, I get down here about 20 weekends a year, okay? I live in Beaver Dam. And I was here visiting my mother, and I opened up the paper, and I saw what was going on with the proposal and everything. And I looked at my wife and I said, geez, I said, that's a wonderful idea. I said, that just fits everything, you know? So, so we talked a little bit about it, and I thought, gee, is there any investment opportunities in that? And so I tracked down Troy, took two weeks before he even talked to me. And one thing led to another. My wife and I came down here during the week and met with him, and met with him for about four to five hours in the coffee shop. And we, we decided to be a, we thought it was a great idea, a neat idea, to be able to give back part of the, in the end, to the community for ourselves by donating the library. That's the intent, so. And in the meantime, hopefully, the, hopefully, the, the other structure does well as well. So, so we're an investor. Today, we own a part of a, a lot, and we're hoping that it goes a little further. So I just think it's a great idea, and as, you know, Troy did a lot of work on this, and, and we hope to, you know, eight or 10 years here, get back down on the farm and, and retire there, so. And maybe they'll let me shovel the snow at the library, or at the, at the hotel. So anyway, that's all I had to say, so. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, time for council discussion.
I'll lead off.
All right.
I'm, I'm really not sure that when this whole project started, and I'm, I wasn't in on any initial discussions, I think there are people in this room who were in initial discussions. I, I'm not sure what was envisioned on that lot at that time. I've heard people talk about the fact that they wanted student housing, I, I've heard all kinds of things. So I, I really, really don't know what the original vision was. So when somebody said the original vision was to have a library, I mean, I think that the, that there was some talk about redevelopment of that lot, and as that, those talks proceeded, and I don't believe that anybody on this council was in these talks, I'm not even sure what city staff might have been in those talks. I think at that point in time when they started talking about that block, and as somebody has said, we wouldn't put that block up as the model of what we want our community to look like, not as it is today, not as it was three months ago, I don't think. Before there was a fence around it, we would have put it up as a model of what we want our, come and build in our beautiful community. I don't think any of us would have identified that block as being the, the signature block. So anyway, I, I don't know how that project developed. I don't know. But I do know that at one point in time then, I heard if we develop the whole block, that means that our library is gone. I've been on this council for, this is my fourth term, I'm in my 10th year. At one point in time, we did a study of city facilities. It's highly unfortunate that in this town, during the 80s and 90s, there wasn't development. Today, you see our issues on the surface, in bad streets, in buildings that need furnaces and air conditioning, this one, that need ceilings, that need all kinds of things. You see all ki, I mean, I think everyone in this room that lives in this city could go and point to things that the city should be putting its money in. Yet, tonight, when Valerie made her presentation, you heard about expenditure restraints and tax levies, and I believe that we were allowed to raise our expenditures by like $30,000 this year. Is that right, Karen? $30,000. That's the amount of money that we got this year over last year. And I spent my yesterday testifying before a Senate committee to attempt to get our full municipal services payment for the municipal services that we provided last year to untaxable property in this community at the rate of $484,000, of which we got $200,000, maybe $210 now. Is that right? Because they've now granted us another $10,000, $210. So, we are only $250,000 short there, and when the senator said, well, if we give them this money, they're just gonna have a windfall, they need to decrease their taxes, I wanted to say, we spent that money last year, and you, our citizens, are paying that money. So, for me, if we are going to make this community move forward, it's going to take public-private partnerships. It's not going to be public money. And I can virtually guarantee, I can virtually guarantee, I would, well, I suppose I shouldn't say guarantee, but I suspect that if we said, we need $6 million for a library, because that's about what it would be, we would have to go buy land, because we don't have land, that land would come off the tax rule, then we'd have to develop the library, and we are going to add that money to your tax bill, we're gonna go to referendum, and we are gonna add that money to your tax bill, I bet virtually every one of you would stand up and say, where can I sign up, and when can I make my first payment? I bet none of you would say, the taxes in Platteville are already too high, and now you're gonna make them higher. I bet none of you would say that. So, my belief is, we have to do public-private partnerships. This $2 million tax incentive investment will be paid back through increment, and it is to put in underground parking, which we're requiring, because we don't want a bunch parking lot downtown. That wouldn't be attractive. And the lease payments, you know, I'm as uncomfortable as anybody else is about no guarantee at the end. But I hear Farshad say, he's got the $4.5 million ball that he's holding, that he doesn't have to release until somebody else releases. And so, I'm saying, you know, I don't know how you can get all the way to a guarantee. So, I'm in favor of this project. I'm not, I believe that it is a gateway to our downtown. I believe that this development will do great things. I know there are other people in the downtown who have planned expansions. I believe that those expansions will go forward. I know that later in our agenda, we're closing on another property, or determining the closing date on another property in the downtown that needs to be developed, and if we don't take care of the decay in the middle of our city, just like if you don't take care of the decay in the middle of your tooth. What have you got left?
From my standpoint, I think this is a great project, I really do, but the one thing that bothers me, and there's nothing we can do about it, and Farshad explained it very well, but I was gonna ask him, can't we change one word in the developer's agreement, which means they intend to give the library versus will give? But he explained that very well to the rest of you folks, even though it's still, I hate the idea, just changing one word. But this little piece, couple pieces of paper right here, the library block development question and answer, this information is excellent. It's too bad that it wasn't made available in a public forum like we did at the beginning of this project, so the people, all you folks out here and everybody else would be able to understand it, because it explains it very well. This is information that none of you had, actually.
It's been online.
It was available online, but you know as well as I do, how many people do it, as long as we've been here, they say, we never look at that. So, if that would have been there, I don't think we'd even be going through all this discussion. I really don't. It's a great, great, great project, but we need to have the public allow for some public input. Thank you.
Are we going down the line?
Might as well.
Go ahead. I just wanted to say that it's been crazy to be on the council during this discussion. I came in a year and a half ago, while this was well underway. I remember the night when it was promised that we'd get a free library, but I do wanna point out, too, that almost anybody in this room who's ever gone through a development deal has seen that they begin at point A and end up at point D. And it's just a wild process to undergo. It's been a roller coaster of meetings for us, tons of night meetings, tons of conflicting information over the course of a couple of years. But in the end, I think that we've hired a lot of different consultants, and we've had a lot of different perspective on this. I've argued with them, I think, a little bit at least, enough that I feel satisfied that we really drilled the different parties involved, so that at least I personally feel that I understand this project much better now than was ever presented a year ago. It's a complicated project when you're doing a public-private partnership. I know that when developers develop in our community, they don't usually tell you what they're doing until they've already signed all the deals and it's done. And we, as a city, unfortunately or fortunately, are behold to the same rules, that when you do a development negotiation, you can't talk about the terms of the deal publicly, because that would compromise the development deal, right? So, I know it sounds like it was secretive, and it is, right? Because you're working out a development agreement, and so unfortunately, that's the way it went down over the past year. And I wish we could have done more public input, but I also understand that we had to respect the terms of a developer. And so, here we are today, presenting the information. It was first publicly made available, I think, October 24th.
A month ago.
A month ago. So, it's been out there for a month, and I just started to get emails in the past two days about it. So, I know that that's the way things work, but I also think that we've had information out there for a month. And I don't believe the city staff's been contacted very often, if at all, with questions. So, I mean, I know that this is the public process, but I also think there's been a month where people could have asked questions directly to the council or the staff, and it didn't really happen. So, I guess that's my two cents, that it has been a month. Just don't blame us for not saying that there wasn't time for people to be able to talk about it.
Well, I don't have too many comments about this. I'm in favor of the library project. I do think that it wouldn't hurt us if we waited until December 8th to make a decision. So, I'm actually in favor of tableing this project, this item, until December 8th, so that the people can say, well, you pushed it through on one night. Thank you.
I have a number of aspects that I've looked at this. I came in just basically six months ago, and this process has been going on. I have to compliment the developer. I have to compliment our attorney that's been working with us on this. This has not been easy for the council. This has not been one where we just wanted to push it through because we wanted a library. There was a lot of questions asked. We had a lot of input from different people. I look at it as, you know, I'm a business person, and I see the numbers, you crunch the numbers, and they don't always come up. But I also made, dedicated myself to help the community, to improve the community, and help us be better, to serve our children, to serve our elderly, to be something beyond just crunching the numbers. If we just crunch the numbers, there are a lot of things we can't do. But there is a lot of possibilities for us to do here. We can do service to our children, service to our elderly, service to each one of us, because there is more to life than crunching the numbers. Thank you.
Well, it's my turn. First, I wanna thank everybody for coming. I think that it, as I mentioned to the chamber board a few days ago, it is very encouraging when our community comes together and at least has conversation. I am in favor of this project for a lot of reasons. We need to develop our downtown. I've heard over and over again, the businesses on the downtown need our support, and that means shop, get your hair done, the list is endless, which I do, and I think this is a great anchor. You also heard me tonight talk about the museum. We never once talked about upgrading those buildings, because that will take another whole good development coming forward. But I can visualize in the next 10, 15 years, we have a development on this end of Main Street, we'll have a great development on that end of Main Street, and it's all gonna be for the social environment that we have here. And I understand what it's like to have competitors, since I'm in the business of having competitors, as Tom has. Competitors help us be calm and stay better business people. And I know it's difficult to think in those terms, and as Tom said about crunching numbers, it's a hard job for us to do as business owners. It can be hurtful, but it's also a powerful energy. I have been on a number of other boards that have used tax money to build buildings. Like Eileen, I was on the Southwest Tech Board, and we built a couple buildings during my tenure, and I am proud of those buildings. Wisconsin Public Radio Association Board, I was a member of, and we know that has transitioned over many years, including the adjustments on tax money. So, this is, as Barb said, a great private and public lending of monies about the community, and like I said, I'm in favor of this project. I think I'll leave it at that.
We did just have one individual who has asked to speak, and I will ask Mr. Browning, sorry?
Can you vote?
If you'd like to speak, Mr. Browning. I can't tell from your thing, it says in favor and against, so I'm not sure.
No.
Okay, Darrell Browning, 325 South Chestnut. Everybody in the rooms, favor of the library. Well, we built the old library, it was too small. So, I'm not here to down the library. I'm here, one, I don't like the fact that I was told at the meeting at Bank that it was gonna cost us a buck a year, and it was gonna be given to us. But, two, nobody has brought up what happens to the rent at the end of the seven years. Now, the developer told us that he has a large incentive to give it to us. So, I have two questions for him. One, what is the object, the main goal of a corporation? Is it to make a profit? Two, if you can get the rent on that library to $40,000 a year, or a month, sorry, a month, would it offset the $4 million incentive that you have to give it to us? Those are my questions.
Your questions are all right.
I mean, what happens to the rent?
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hoekstra, would you like to respond to those questions?
All right, I think the question that you've asked, Mr. Browning, has probably been answered, and I think that that will be my final comment. This was a long process, and I believe that we have talked to the public when we could talk to the public, when we had something definite that we could say, we brought it forward. There have been many articles, not only in our local newspaper, but also in the Dubuque Telegraph Herald. We have, I believe, been in the spotlight for probably two years, minimum. And yes, this project has changed. As Amy rightly pointed out, it would be unusual if a project didn't change. As Mr. Kloster said, the residential portion left, that changed the dynamic. So, should we have said no at some point? Should the developer have said no at some point? I don't think so. I agree with Barb, both ends Barb, that this is an excellent project for the city of Platteville. This moves us forward in a way that we have not seen before, and that I hope we will see more of. The developer was recognized as a Developer of the Year for Holiday Ends. He received an award in 2015 for that. He was nominated. He didn't even know he was being nominated, but this is the person that we're working with. He could have walked away from this project at any time, he still could. He could build his library, or his hotel on that block, and that would be the end of it. But to his credit, and to the credit of the council members who are sitting up here, who spent hours looking over the details of this project, and finally saying, this will work. This will work, and this is good for the community, not just tomorrow, but for years to come. So, I thank everybody for coming tonight. I think that if we had more people who were opposed to this project, we would have had those people come this evening and speak. I think they didn't come to speak against the project, because they understand that, yes, we don't have a firm guarantee, but we have a pretty darn good idea of what will happen. We'll have a new hotel, we'll have a new commercial space, use a library of 22,000 square feet, and a new clinic, and underground parking, which is a novelty also for Platteville. And none of that is free. And please realize that that free came way back when this project was first started and talked about. To think that it could not change, I think, would be naive on my part, and it did change. But the end result is a wonderful project at the top of Maine, that as Barb also said, is already spurring potential more development. So, I understand Mr. Killian's comment about perhaps delaying this. I see no value in delaying it at this point. I think we've talked this through in every way we can, and like the other council members who have spoken, I am in favor of it.
I'll make a motion to adopt the amended and restated development agreement, City of Platteville, for the library block development.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, and we'll vote.
I'll table the motion.
We already have a motion on the floor, Ken, and we have to vote on the motion.
Then?
Yes.
Das?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Nall?
Yes.
Killian?
No.
Nichols?
Yes.
Seebath-Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you all again very much for coming, and we look forward to seeing the development take place. Thank you, Dylan. The two developers who also.
Oh, my God.
Well, he could have made them.
The sad fact is.
He didn't.
Come up with some other grand scheme.
Five-minute break.
Thanks.
Oh, I don't know.
My gosh, it was a little more long drawn out of here than what I thought.
Oh, I want water. Where did you guys get water?
Do we have any more water?
Jan, where's?
Oh, yeah, do you want to?
I don't wanna do it right now.
Okay, all right.
Quite frankly.
I have to.
You're closer to it, you know.
Hi, Darrell, how are you?
Hitting me, water.
Let's just do a five minutes.
We'll do two agenda items, and then we'll do it.
Well, Wayne?
Good luck.
We gotta pay for it now?
Yeah, you gotta kind of pay for it now.
All right, folks, we are going to continue with our meeting. Thank you all very much.
Thank you all very much. We have more items to discuss. Thank you very much. All right, the next item is Resolution 1528, authorizing the salaries and rates of pay of the officers and permanent employees excluding union and library personnel and city manager for the year 2016. And is there a staff member who would like to talk about the resolution authorizing the salary and pay?
Valerie?
Oh, thank you. Do you have a solution?
Sorry, I was a little caught off and everyone leaving.
That's okay, you know, given the hour, we, I think, we're just going to keep rolling here. All right, go ahead.
So this is just the salary resolution, as mentioned, authorizing the salaries and rates of pay for the permanent employees excluding union personnel, library personnel, and the city manager for the year 2016. It does include a 1% increase, as discussed in the budget presentation, for all permanent staff, 20 hours and above. And again, that does, this salary resolution, again, excludes the union, library, and city manager. So we just ask, and staff recommends, that the council approve the salary resolution as presented.
Questions? I believe we allocated the money in the budget, is that correct?
That is correct.
Then I move we approve the salary resolution 1528.
A second.
I have a motion and a second. We'll vote.
Den.
Yes.
Das.
Yes.
Stackhausen.
Yes.
Knoll.
Yes.
Killian.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Seebuth Wilson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item is a resolution for a conditional use permit at 780 North Court. Joe?
Okay, this is a request for intensive home occupation. At that location would be for massage therapy business. Hours would be Monday through Friday, 9 to 5, Saturday, 12 to 5. The applicant is the only employee of the business. No physical changes are proposed to the property. Pretty straightforward. We've had other similar requests over the years without any issues. The Plan Commission recommended approval, and staff also recommends approval. Any questions?
Questions, anyone? Is there a motion?
I move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit for 780 North Court. We'll vote.
Den.
Yes.
Das.
Yes.
Stackhausen.
Yes.
Knoll.
Yes.
Killian.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Seebuth Wilson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item is a resolution for Transportation Investment Coalition. And city manager.
Yes, I can give a brief summary, I guess. One of the major legislative objectives of the League of Wisconsin Municipalities is to advocate for a sustainable approach to transportation aid. And to that end, they've asked their member cities to adopt a resolution that would show our support for the Transportation Investment Coalition.
Discussion?
I'll make a motion that we support the Transportation Investment Coalition as proposed.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? We'll vote.
Den.
Yes.
Das.
Yes.
Stackhausen.
Yes.
Knoll.
Yes.
Killian.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Seebuth Wilson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item is City of Platteville Community Welcome Sign. Second location. Give our person time to get up, get up there.
Okay, the city has budgeted $30,000 to fund the design, purchase, and installation of new welcome signs in 2015. A sign committee consisting of community members had been developed by the former city manager. The overall sign design was approved by the common council on November 11, 2014. And currently, one sign has been installed. We kind of talked about this last time, but. And this is on Highway 80 on the Alliant Energy property. This is fully functional, and the rough cost of the sign, or the cost, was roughly $12,630. We are waiting for one actual bill to come back in, so I'm not going to say that that was the actual total. But the committee felt that an ideal second location would be on Business 151 between the exit ramp and Commercial Drive on the Walmart property. The sign would be located on the right side of the road, making it easily visible to those traveling in the city. This location also coincides with the Wisconsin DOT Annual Average Daily Traffic Count map as being the most-used entrance to the city of Platteville. And that was last updated in May of 2014. In your packet, you should have found proposed information, including the specific location photo, oh, is here. The lease agreement, the sign cost, and installation expense estimates. I should note that the lease agreement was initially created by Walmart Real Estate Management Company, but then edited by the city's attorney, Brian McGrath. And that is the draft that you have in your packet. Staff recommends approval of the proposed Business Highway 151 sign location, lease agreement, sign cost, and installation expense estimates for a total estimated price of $13,664.29. Staff also recommends carrying the remaining balance in the budget for 2015, approximately, at this point, $18,370 to the 2016 budget to begin the sign installation when the weather permits. Lastly, another item that was discussed at the November 10 meeting, were the dated signs located on Highway 81. This is on the right-hand side before Von Glaan Auto, in Business 151 County D. This is also on residential property. If no one objects, I would recommend using the remaining funds after the second sign installation, which is approximately $4,706, to be used to remove these dated signs, and also use a portion of leftover funds for landscaping around the new signs.
You know, Jody, I think you've done a great job on this, and I really commend you for your work with Walmart, because it was not an easy job to get to the right people at Walmart. So I'll make a motion that we carry over the funds of $18,000, install the second sign at Walmart next year when the ground is ready, I guess, or whatever you say, when it can be done, and that you be allowed to do some landscaping around the two signs with the $4,000 and remove at least those two. And if you find a few other of those signs that nobody saw, since, you know, they're not highly visible, feel free to remove those two.
Second.
Any other comments?
Sorry.
Okay. Jody, for those of you in the home audience, is the camera operator, so she's going back and forth between the podium and the camera, so. I would also say, nice job, this sign looks great. I'm very pleased that Alliant Energy let us locate one there, and Walmart is letting us locate another one by their location. So we have a motion and a second, any other comments?
I just want to comment. I know Kathy Kopp is also on your committee. The chamber did a review between our community and a complementary community. And the other community was, I do believe, Bearboo. And at the time, that was quite noted, at their signage is very, very nice, very comfortable. You know what you're doing when you're getting into town on their major highways. So I really appreciate that this group has stepped forward and came up with this new design, exciting new design that reflects our community.
All right, we'll vote. Den.
Yes.
Das.
Yes.
Stackhausen.
Yes.
Knoll.
Yes.
Killian.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Seebuth Wilson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item is Move to Amend Petition for Direct Legislation. We have one person who is registered in favor.
And I can speak to that if you'd like.
I'm sorry. You want to talk about it first, that would be a good idea.
On October 28, I certified a petition that was received in my office that had 820 valid signatures. And they had asked, it was from the Platteville Move to Amend Committee, it was a petition for direct legislation, and they are asking that the council refer a resolution to the vote, to the electors. Would you like me to read it? Asking if they'll adopt the following resolution. Whereas the Supreme Court's decision in Citizens United versus Federal Elections Commission and related case law allows unlimited political campaign spending to influence local, state, and federal elections, now therefore be it resolved that the people of the City of Platteville, Wisconsin, seek to reclaim democracy from the expansion of corporate personhood rights and the corrupting influences of unregulated political contributions and spending. We stand with the Move to Amend Campaign in communities across the country to support passage of an amendment to the United States Constitution stating, one, that only human beings, not corporations, unions, nonprofits, or similar associations, are endowed with constitutional rights, and money is not speech, and therefore regulating political contributions and spending is not equivalent to limiting political speech. Be it further resolved that the City of Platteville Clerk is directed to forward a copy of this resolution to our state and federal representatives with instructions to enact resolutions and legislation to advance this effort. So the council has two decisions that they can make tonight. They can either adopt the resolution, or they can put this to the referendum in April 1st, as the committee had intended.
Any questions?
As a referendum question.
One question.
For Jan, or?
Not for you, Jan, but for the gentleman that we talked to the last time.
Yep, and they've asked to speak, so.
Yes.
Can we, can I just ask them to come up to the podium then, please? And I think you're probably referring to Dick Rundle, who.
Yes, I am.
Spoke last time, so Dick, if you would like to speak first, please. And again, we are getting late, so.
It'll be short. I think probably, my name is Dick Rundle, and I reside at 1270 Perry Drive here in Platteville. And I think maybe we could start off with Mike's question and go from there.
My question, refresh my memory, because which would you prefer?
Our preference is for the residents of Platteville to vote on this issue, because I think it's an issue, Move to Amend is a nationwide effort, and the idea is to gather as much support as we can for this movement, because we need to show our elected officials that this is something the citizens of this country, and also the citizens of Platteville, support. And we would like to see this happen. We need to have our constitution amended so that corporations do not have the right to participate in our electoral process, to give money to candidates. And the same is true of unions, it's the same thing with. Can't think of the term for them, but the nonprofit organizations as well, so. But the idea is, this, we like the idea of putting it on the referendum or on the ballot because it gives the citizens of Platteville a chance to vote on it. And I think what the citizens say is probably a lot more effective in commuting all this information to our elected officials. If it comes from the city council, that's one thing, and we would certainly appreciate that. But I think ideally, we appreciate this go to the electorate. And basically, did you have any more questions on that at all?
No, thank you. I want just clarification as to what you prefer, so I remember where I'm at.
Good.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll just make a couple of brief comments, because I tried to cram an awful lot of information in five minutes, and even though we had a few extra minutes of questions and answers, it was also a lot of information to absorb in a short period of time. We've been working on this for about six months now, and we still have to ask questions as to how this works, how that works, and so forth. So it's a complicated process. Basically, the idea is, if we can get an amendment to the Constitution that says only human beings, not corporations, not unions, not nonprofits, have rights under the Constitution, then we can do something about all the money that's being dumped into our electoral process, that's going to be given to our elected officials, and so on. If we have an amendment saying corporations should not be part of this, or that it should, the amendment should say that only human beings have these rights. And then we can go through the process of getting all of the excess money out of the electoral process, influence in our government, and so forth. And that's what we really are trying to do. And we really, I don't think personally that anything is going to change in terms of all the money we have that's being influencing our government and our political officials, our officials we have in government. The only way we'll get it out is if we get this amendment to the Constitution, where we can say, this is only for the people of this country, it's not to be influenced by corporations, and so on. So it's a nationwide effort. There are 16 states already that have called for a constitutional amendment. We have 60 communities currently in Wisconsin that have also asked for a constitutional amendment. There are four in our area currently. We are going to have, I think I just heard today that Jamesville is going to be putting this on a ballot for next spring. We expect that probably Darlington, Belmont, maybe Lancaster, and also Platteville will be four additional cities that will be going on record as saying, we support the idea of a constitutional amendment. We want to build on this, and I think Charlie Clark is also going to make some comments in regards to the process, so it'll kind of give you an idea. And that was what Ken Killian asked last week, is, okay, if this is passed next spring, where to go from there, how does this all work? And so Charlie has some comments on that, so I think from now on, I think I would just defer to what Charlie has to say, and then I think that will probably have some questions of him. It's a complicated process, so if you don't have questions, I wouldn't be surprised. Any questions before I go?
Oh, thank you.
My name is Charlie Clark, I live at 875 West Main. Yeah, I'm here to answer any questions you might have, but I try to get a little bit more educated and aware to answer questions with regard to, okay, if it does get under the ballot, if it does pass with an election in April, what then? Well, the major step from what you've heard, being read, was that the city will go on record as approving an effort to put an amendment to the Constitution. But then, it also means that as an elected entity, you are forwarding to the state level, to the federal level, your position that this has been passed. Hey, folks, take notice of this, we're in favor of this as a city. And as I've been told by others, we may not be alive to see the full effects of this effort. According to my hairline, that's probably true. But the important thing is that we're getting started, and that if Platteville goes on record of supporting this, and the other 60 communities are joined by a few others, eventually, our state will take up this issue, and then there'll be a legislation at the state level that says, we support this, then they, Wisconsin, could join the 16 other states that are already on record as supporting this type of effort. But on a side note, the folks on this council that have waded through things like the other discussion that we had. You know, it seems like it could be as well more complicated than even that. But at this point, it's a simple matter of, does the city of Platteville want to go on record as supporting this effort? So, questions?
Yes.
Well, my question was, because of the political climate in the state of Wisconsin, you know, it's just go into the black hole.
And that's why, as Dick was pointing out, it has to really come from the people. Because if it says, oh, some city council approved this, but are the people really behind it? And so our job, if we can get you guys to approve this effort, our job as people working on this committee is to get the people of Platteville aware of what it is they're voting on, why they could vote on it, and what the issues are. But you're right, I mean, how about in the last couple of weeks, when certain legislators are proposing that we add more money to the pot of election processes? Yeah, so it's certainly not something that's going to come from the politicians unless there's pressure from the people. In fact, at the national level, the amendment efforts are called "We the People." It's not called Move to Amend, it's called "We the People Amendment." And so, yeah, you're right, things going on right now don't seem very much in favor of this. Is it really going into a black hole? We think that there's a lot of energy in a black hole, and we hope that we can pull out the energy to make this something that's effective for our children and grandchildren. and grandchildren, but maybe not me.
My question is, is, how did, um, you, Platteville, in the state of Wisconsin, get involved? How did you decide?
Somebody asked me to go to a meeting.
Oh, I know that.
It happens to you all the time, right?
I know all about that.
But, um, I, I learned about it in a, probably about April, didn't know anything about it before, but that's an example of what can happen with any type of movement, that you educate or inform people and things can happen. Uh, so, I think, uh, it may have happened even before the Citizens United versus, uh, the FEC, but, um, I think things like that have spurred people to try and act and do something. Um, and you know, even if you go down, if you go down fighting, you feel better than if you just rolled over and played dead, so.
The questions?
I'll bet you a lot of us have turkeys that we have to put in the oven real soon, so.
Do you have any more questions? No, okay, so the, the request really from, and, and I should add, Ray Spelham, is that correct? All right, and, uh, Marilyn Gotchak have voted, uh.
Registered.
Excuse me, registered in favor. Um, so basically, the request from this group is to put it on a referendum, not just to pass. Yeah, on the April ballot, yep. So.
Make a motion to put the constitutional amendment on the referendum for vote.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second? We'll vote. Den?
Yes.
Das?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
See both Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, next item, former Pioneer Ford Properties' visioning process timeline. Joe?
Um, the only thing that I would like to add from what I talked about last time is that we do have it scheduled for December first at seven PM at the Mount City Bank Drive Thru Meeting Room. And we have started doing direct invites to various committees and commissions that are involved in downtown, and, um, Jody's getting the word out just to the general public, so we'll see what kind of response we get, and I think we will also maybe work on some kind of a online survey, or give somebody, another opportunity that cannot make that meeting to get their thoughts in, so.
Questions, anyone? All right, we'll put it on your calendar for December first from seven till nine PM, I think we said, I guess it could go longer if lots of people are there and have ideas, but.
Well, if we're not out there by about nine thirty, we have a issue with the alarms, so. We do have an end date.
Something to keep in mind, thank you.
Let's just invite a policeman to be with us. Should I take him, is that an action? Should I make a motion?
Uh. Information or?
That was action, I think.
It is action, so, yeah.
I make a motion that we follow the proposed time, the timeline and processes proposed in our agenda for, for December first meeting.
There's a second? We have a second from Ken. We'll vote. Den?
Yes.
Das?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
See both Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item is amendment to the offer to purchase for the former Pioneer Ford Properties.
Uh, yeah, this was, uh, actually, uh, uh, amendment to the, uh, agenda as well. We originally thought we were gonna have to delay the closing on this again, because we were waiting to hear from, uh, Department Administration and HUD on some of the requirements for the acquisition to stay in compliance with the grant requirements. Uh, we did get the, uh, information that we needed, so we are able to proceed. We have a closing scheduled for December first, um, so that is the good news. Um, the better news is that they actually did come back with the official word that it is a voluntary sale, which everybody seemed to understand, but we were waiting for the official response, so that was the, the first piece of the puzzle we needed to know, and then that gave us the direction on how we can proceed. Um, so to maintain compliance, um, with the grant requirements, we did modify the amendment slightly. Paragraph number four on the, uh, the second page of that amendment, basically it just, to stay in compliance, even though it's, um, a voluntary sale, we still had to have, um, something that designated or set what the fair market value of the property was. Um, so the, we have an appraisal that has been completed to set that fair market value. We can go less than that, and the, um, offer is at the original price, which is less than the estimated fair market value, as long as the seller is aware of what the fair market value was and agrees to the lesser price, um, we can go with that price. And that language has been added just to make it clear that this offer recognizes there's a higher value that's been established, but the seller is willing to sell at a lesser price. And as you recall, he is basically gonna make that difference, um, as a donation, so he will get some, um, credit on his taxes in the process of doing that. So, um, we feel that going forward with this amendment, we should be in compliance with the grant requirements as far as the acquisition, so, um, we would just, to make everything above board, and hopefully they can't come along later and say, you should've done this, we would prefer that you vote on this amendment.
So it's not, it's not adjusting the purchase date, it's adjusting the?
No, actually, that, that was, that was the amendment that we were supposed to be bringing to you, and I think Brian just forgot to change that. We were kinda rushed to get this to you, so we are scheduled to close on December first, as you had previously voted on.
Are there any questions?
Need a motion? So what do we need?
We need a motion because there's an action. I don't have it, so you guys.
Yeah, a, a motion to keep the closing date on December first?
No, there was, we, we have in our original packet, we have the original.
Language.
Colette sent a, a revision. It is not in our packet, so Mike has it.
Language, okay.
So you want to amend the offer to pur- purchase. And before you, before any, before anybody makes a motion, Ken has a question.
Okay.
Go ahead, Ken.
Oh, my question is about the original motion. Did we ever approve the purchase?
Oh, a long time ago.
Yeah, we approved the purchase.
Yes.
Long time ago.
Okay. Do you have a question?
No, I'm ready to.
Approve the, the motion is to approve the amended offer to purchase.
Correct. And, and you received that, and so that's why you have it in front of you, the, the, um, computer record did not have it yet.
So, that's the motion I offer.
Okay, the motion you offer is to amend.
Offer to purchase.
All right.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, and we'll vote. Den?
Yes.
Das?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
See both Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Final item, the twenty sixteen, twenty twenty capital do, capital improvement project, CIP, which is in our packet.
Yes, so in your packet, you'll find the proposed two thousand and sixteen to two thousand and twenty capital improvement plan. Um, with the help of department heads, we've updated the CIP to reflect changes and items that were dismissed for the current year, two thousand and sixteen, and moved them forward to, um, to other years as, as the department heads requested. Um, so the total, two thousand and sixteen to two thousand and twenty plan includes expenses totaling forty-two million, four hundred and ninety-four thousand, seven hundred and sixteen dollars. Um, please note that this does include all of the water and sewer and airport capital projects, so not, that, that whole expense will not be city expense, just so that is noted. You can see the breakdown as follows. Um, for two thousand and sixteen, the amount is four million, nine hundred and eighty-seven thousand, six hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Um, only three million, seventy-five thousand, six hundred and seventy-eight of that amount is, um, for city capital projects. The city plans to borrow, as I talked about in the budget presentation earlier, one point six, roughly one point six million for street reconstruction and fire truck expenses. Um, Boston Street is a TID eligible expense, so that will be, um, paid for by TID seven borrowing. Um, city staff adjusted the CIP request for years two thousand and seventeen to two thousand and twenty to reflect council feedback during the budget work sessions, and again, projects that were not included in the proposed budgets, and also increased cost estimate for projects being pushed out additional years. We also did provide you, um, a spreadsheet showing some of the changes from the original CIP request to tonight, and where some of those items, what years those items were moved to. Um, so staff recommends that city council make a motion to approve this two thousand and sixteen to two thousand and twenty capital improvement plan in the amount of forty-two million, four hundred and ninety-four thousand, seven hundred and sixteen dollars.
Any questions? I do have a question. Yes. Um, uh, going back to an earlier budget discussion, uh, in which Mr. Killian brought up, uh, Lily Street. Laura. Lily or Laura or whatever. Laura, Lily, and Ellen. It was my understanding that that was in the budget for twenty-six, not next year, but the year after, twenty seventeen.
Twenty seventeen.
And it is in twenty seventeen, okay. Ken, I was just checking to make sure it's there.
Yeah, that's right. Maybe Laura and Ellen Street he was talking about.
Laura and Ellen, and it is in the twenty seventeen.
Yes.
I was just, I got my years confused, because I was like, it should be in next, the next, well, it'd be the next budget year, since we just passed this budget year.
Yes.
Okay.
And I wanted to move it to twenty sixteen.
Yeah, well, it's in twenty seventeen.
Because I believe that the only viable project on the list for twenty sixteen is to do the front street in front of City Hall. The rest of them could be put off. And that, uh, I call it based upon my misery index, that the misery index would do Laura Street before these other streets. Thank you.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the twenty sixteen, twenty twenty capital improvement plan in the amount of forty-two thousand, four hundred and ninety-four dollars and seven hundred and six, four hundred and ninety-two dol- four hundred and ninety-four thousand,